Councilwoman Wood?
President.
Hockaday?
Here.
Sorch?
Here.
Tolliver?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Vice President Bill Tyson? And Council President DeRae.
President.
We have a floor on the seat.
The notice requirement provided for the open public meeting law has been satisfied. Notice was properly given, said notice having been transmitted to the Courier News and Star Ledger on Tuesday, January 2nd, 2018, as well as posting of the bulletin board in the city clerk's office. Madam Clerk, are there any communications from the mayor?
Yes, communications from the mayor from his honor, the mayor, Adrian O'Malley, correspondent, dated March 2nd, 2018, addressed to members of the government body, requiring advice and consent to appointing Valerie Jackson as deputy city administrator for economic development.
Any other communications?
None submitted.
The bills listed and other financial documents have been sent to the council via email. At this time, I would ask that we take a moment of silence to recognize former councilwoman William Reed, who is no longer with us. Okay. Public comments will be limited to resolutions and ordinance being considered this evening. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes. The floor is now open.
Good evening, everybody. Alan Golds in 939 Madison Avenue. I'm sad to hear the news about Councilwoman Reed. You have a good life, and sometimes it's cut too short no matter what their age. The reason I'm here tonight is on several issues. First being Item C, which is the Nishwan Group ordinance or resolution contract. Now, aside from this prohibited contribution that Michelle Delafort made to the mayor's campaign last May, if you look at this resolution here, it references a resolution that you passed in January approving a variety of engineers and planning consultants and such. And I looked at that resolution, and it lists different categories and lists a whole number of different companies. And yet, I don't see Nishwan Group on this list at all, which may be in keeping apparently with the fact that they've been getting up to this point non-fair and open contracts, which prohibits making certain contributions, which they did presumably in breach of their contract. And the other reason I'm here, as it was a couple of years ago, is Item C, which is the Resolution Concerning the Month of Ramadan. And as I said last time, and I'll explain again, I want to know why this city council is seemingly discriminating against our Muslim residents in this city. I mean, you don't make religious statements to Jews about fasting on Yom Kippur. You don't tell Christians that they should abstain from something or fast during Lent. You don't pick out other religions and tell them what to do. And yet, if you read through this thing, you know, sandwich between saying, you know, as a community that they're making a lot of contributions, you don't list any person, you don't list any particular contributions, and you sandwich this thing in telling people the exact words, maybe, you might not get to it. Imperative duty to abstain from something and to give it up, such as eating, drinking, or otherwise. Now, a lot of religions are out there, and they all have their rules and restrictions. And I think it's fine enough to let individual residents choose. This is not something that the state should be involved with. I mean, the state, not necessarily New Jersey, but in a more generic sense. But I think that, you know, to choose one religion and tell them what they should be doing doesn't account for anybody who's a server, servant or not. So that's my point, this year as it was the other year. Thank you.
In my web 1000 South Avenue Plainfield. Just have one question. Item S, Resolution Authorizing, Approve and Cancel and Refund Special Goods District Taxes, what exactly is that mean? I think anybody that's sent in their money, they're going to be funded.
I'll get your answer for you.
Thank you very much.
Resolution S deals with one property.
Just one property?
Yeah, it's $1,800.
Okay.
Timothy Priano, Martin Avenue. Just one thing again. We're hiring another person from outside the area. Why is not the council asking for city people who live in the residence? I know it's a merrier choice to whatever he wants to hire, but the point is these jobs should be put out to people in the city first. We don't see any public listings on those things, and everything is done behind. I'm sure the candidate is qualified, but she's coming from two towns that have poverty levels way below ours, and for the years being in East Orange and Orange has not improved. So why go lower than trying to find somebody who's been in prominent areas, have grown communities to a better standard above Plainfield? Just asking the question. Thank you.
See no more for privilege law. Can I have a motion to close? All in favor? MC 2018-05 through MC 2018-08 are scheduled for public hearing and second reading on April 9th, 2018, as advertised. Are there any questions from the council on these ordinances? Councilwoman Howard?
I have a quick question for Director Riley. I know you've changed, is changing the speed limit from 30 to 25, right? From one end of 35 to 25, from Park Avenue to, I don't think, to whatever.
City line, yes.
Yeah, yeah. So...
Can you speak into the light?
So you think that changing the speed limit is going to eliminate people from speeding? Or is it just going to increase tickets?
We're hoping that any individuals will abide the law. I can't say anything's going to eliminate speeding because people are foolish, some people don't pay attention. So we're not, you know, worried about increasing tickets. We're just trying to minimize speeding conditions and lowering speed limit.
I understand, but what my concern is, how long has that speed limit been 35? For as long as, I know you would know exactly, but as long as I can remember, it's been 35. So to slow down the speed limit is to keep people from speeding, I understand, but how does that affect people going to work in the morning? If it's 25 and they're looking out the city, maybe I'm going to get stopped? Do you think it's going to affect people wanting to work early in the morning and now they can't go 35? Is it going 25?
I can't think of it.
Because people are in a rush, that's all I'm saying. And for the most part, most of them will probably leave, probably. I'm just saying, a little few they do. So if you drop the speed limit, out of concern for people speeding, and it's 25 and they're late anyway, they're still going 35, 42 probably, so I'm just...
They'll get a ticket.
Yeah, that's what I said, it probably will increase tickets, because if they're going 35, okay, you know, traffic is moving along, but I'd like to see residential council where it's 25, if you feel like you're not moving.
Well, my concern around Park Avenue, Front Street Quarter, are motor vehicle accidents. We've had pedestrians hit, we've had individuals, we've had increased motor vehicle accidents. If you go to other cities and other towns, they don't tolerate speeding through their neighborhood in Plainfield here. I pledge to the community, I would make it a safer community, I'm going to do the best I can by doing this.
But I can say one thing on Leon Avenue, I know, for example, everybody has their own speed limit on Leon Avenue. I have observed it myself, and I'm not saying there's not a lot of people that kind of thinks, but it just seems like at certain times of the day, you see people speeding through there and they're not going 25.
Right.
45, probably 50 on some cases. So what are you going to do about that? I know that street was a violation, and it's a four-way stop.
Well, put a four-way stop there, we're increasing enforcement. As a matter of fact, I just ordered five new radar systems for additional patrol besides the traffic. I'm also going to be, in May, going to be putting on another resolution that hopefully you guys will approve, and you guys will see, with help with, you know, speeding violations as opposed to hand-wrecking tickets.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Hockaday?
I'm just hopeful that we can provide accurate notice to other speed changes. Perhaps in this instance, just changing the size from 35 to 25 may not be enough. Some people don't consciously look at those, you know, they still see 35. So if we can, when we vote them out, kind of really point that there's been a speed reduction, you know, so that people who do want to abide by the law, have a notice to do that.
When it goes into effect, I'll make sure that I put out a robocall, and I'll utilize Ms. Popper over here to put out the tactic in Plainfield, I'll utilize the communications director to blast it out to the community, and, you know, that's what I can do, and hopefully worry about by me sitting here, hopefully it spreads, it's on PC TV, they'll be able to see that 25 miles per hour from Park Avenue, city line to city line, and Front Street from city line to city line is 25 miles per hour.
Councilman Wood?
Thank you. These analysis are not just pulled out of the sky, there's a reason why that they're done, because of the incidents that have taken place over the months or maybe even years, and this is why the analysis was done, correct?
Yeah, it's not even analysis I've done, it's multiple citizen complaints that I receive personally, and my traffic, you know, receives personally on a consistent basis about speeding violations.
If someone's doing 35, chances are they're doing 45 and higher. So bringing it down to 25 is still going to be some problems, but there'll be someone out there to enforce it.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Williams?
No comment.
Councilman Sorch?
No comments.
Councilman Mills Tyson?
No comment.
Okay. Are there any questions for Resolution A through F? Do we have a consensus to add to the agenda?
I just want to comment on a question, a comment, just a... When these things are mentioned to the legislative body, they're not just, we don't go after any particular religion. If someone comes to us and asks us, can we recognize it? We do not tell anyone they cannot have this added on to the agenda. It is passed through to the council president, clerk is notified, so it's not like we are picking the Islamic religion out of the blue and putting him on the agenda. We're not omitting any particular religion, so I just want to make that perfectly clear. It was brought to the attention of the council, and that is why it is on the agenda. Thank you, Councilman.
Do I have consensus, it's on the agenda?
Yes, yes.
Okay, you need, F, A, I need a, I need a motion to put a resolution, everyone has gotten the resolution, swing, gallery? I need a, I need a motion to...
Stormwood?
Speckers.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It goes on the agenda. Are there any questions for Resolution G? Do we have consensus to add to the agenda?
Yes.
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 Could we ask Ms. Jackson to just stand up and say a few words? Or you can say how you do.
Good evening, I'm Valerie Jackson, and I'm excited to be in Plainfield, and I have a strong track record in both East Orange and Orange in terms of increasing the amount of investment in those cities, private investment, so thank you.
Would the court of council please present its resolutions?
Yes, thank you, Council President. First, I'd like to add, and that was discussed during our executive session, council's permission, I'd like to add Resolution Authorizing the City of Plainfield's inclusion as a plaintiff in a litigation against opioid manufacturers nationwide. For a little bit of background for those who weren't present in executive session, there's currently litigation going on, which began in Chicago, which is now spread to the state of New Jersey, to bring opioid manufacturers accountable for deceptive practices with regard to the addictive nature of opioids and the ancillary and increased cost to public safety as a result of those opioids. So with the council's permission, we'd like to add a resolution authorizing us to join in that litigation with many other municipalities throughout the state. Council President, is there consensus to add then?
Is there consensus?
Yes.
And additionally, Council President, I have four items which are placed on the agenda. All are workers' compensation settlements, which were previously discussed in executive session. Our defense counsel for workers' compensation is able to reach a settlement within the range authorized by council, the county resolutions authorizing their final settlement.
Do we have a consensus?
Yes.
Thank you, no further remarks, thank you.
Will Department of Administration and Finance please present their...
Good evening, council. Item L represents a request for authorization from council to approve for change orders for the firehouse remodeling project. As work began to build the, and remodel the bathrooms at the firehouse, a number of conditions were identified that require additional work. So there's a request here for $7,000 to cover the change orders.
Do you have a consensus to add this?
Yes.
Item M is a request before council to approve the 2018 CIB budget in the amount of $196,300.
Do I have a consensus?
Question about this one. What's the, what's going to happen with the CIB budget if we decide to make the changes that we missed talking about?
Yeah, the CIB budget will remain the same, the assessment is the same, the ordinance proposed tonight only changed to the management structure, so it would not affect the funds provided to the CIB, nor would it affect our budget.
Do we have a consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
Item N is a resolution, you know, which basically certifies that council and the city are in compliance with the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission's enforcement guidance on the consideration of arrest and conviction records in employment decisions under Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. So you will be attesting to a document that says that we are making sure that we aren't making employment decisions, you know, at odds with those people who may have records and convictions. So that's the intent of this, and it's a requirement before the budget is introduced.
Do I have a consensus?
Yes. Yes.
And if approved by the president, I would like to go out of sequence, because MC 2018-09 needs to be recognized before the budget gets introduced by council as well, and that has to do with the cat bank. What that is, you know, when you talk about the cat bank, you know, it allows us to increase the appropriation limit from 2.5%, which is the statutory amount, to 3.5%. You know, the budget being, that will be discussed shortly, is $2.6 million under the authorized cap, and you'll be prudent to add the additional 1%, which would take the, that amount to $3,364,063. And it may come a time we need it. The cat bank really looks back to prior years, you know, so, you know, at the end of 2018 to 2016, contribution goes away, you know, so it's just something that I recommend to be proven management, which is why it's here, and council has been approving it in prior years.
And clerk, ready to roll ball?
Before we do that, I have a question. So we're on the, on the MC...
2018. 2018-09.
So, so we just got the budget recap tonight, and could you just summarize like what the proposed tax increases?
I will do that next, because the next item is the budget.
Right, but you're asking us to vote on an item that could affect the taxes, no?
No, not at all. This raises the, the level that we could have appropriations to. It is not budget, it's not in the budget or anything else. As I indicated, we are $2.6 million under what we're authorized to do today, you know, with the budget being introduced.
So this would allow us to make emergency appropriations, etc.?
It would be one of, but it's really, let's take next year, you know, there's 3.3 million. If we had enough revenue and the requirement to go forward, you know, $3.3 million higher than the statutory limit, we have the ability to do that. It is just for planning purposes more than anything else. It's not authorization to spend it. Council always controls how high a budget can go, but this just gives us more flexibility from a budgetary perspective.
Roll call vote on MC 2018-09. Council is good?
Yes.
Hockaday?
Yes.
Sorch?
No.
Tolliver?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Vice President Bill Tyson?
Yes.
Council President DeRae?
Yes.
Six in favor, one opposed.
Okay, let's see what else.
Resolution O is the 2018 proposed budget from administration to council. The total budget in front of you is $83,619,221.34. It is up 0.74% over 2017. And within that, salary and wages are up 2.03%, other expenses are down minus 0.26%, municipal amount needed this year is $57,298,112.68. Municipal tax rate is 4.730, which is an increase of 1.5% or $75.65 per average assessed time. And that average assessed value is now $108,196.
Do I have a consensus to put this on?
Yes.
Item P is requesting authorization to approve the execution of the PMMA successor agreement, and that's the Municipal Managers Association.
Do I have consensus?
Yes.
Item Q is a resolution requesting authorization to ratify and execute the agreement with the PMEA.
Do I have consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
R is similar, and that is requesting the authority to ratify the USWU contract.
Do I have consensus?
Yes.
Item S is a resolution for the cancellation of a refund for a special improvement district tax, you know, for Block 625, Lot 18.01, and the refund is in the amount of $454.25, and the cancellation would be a total of $1,817.
Do I have consensus?
Yes.
Item T is a resolution requesting authorization from council for a refund in the amount of $4,249.53.
Do I have consensus?
Yes. Question about this one. Could you explain that, like, what's the contamination ahead? This is a property tax number with respect, it doesn't specify in the resolution what it actually is.
This is a lien that was sold where we didn't know at the time that that property was heavily contaminated. It is now on our list of brownfields, and so we are going to take that, that property, that lien back.
Thank you.
Consensus?
Yes.
U is requesting authorization for, from council to increase the billing on three Muhlenberg properties due to the resolution of a state tax appeal, and the total of that is $620,748.16.
Do we have consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
Item V is requesting authorization from the council to issue a refund due to a duplicate lien payment in the amount of $12,890.67, so Block 333, Lot 20.
Do we have consensus?
Yes.
Okay, will the Department of Public Works, Public Affairs and Safety, please present their resolution?
Good evening, council. Item W is a resolution for approval of Lieutenant Carl Moe, the Plainfield Fire Division, making a fire official. Basically, what that is, is Captain Sklera, who's currently a fire official, is retiring, and we'd like to replace him with Lieutenant Owens. Lieutenant Owens did hold that position prior to Captain Sklera get promoted, and we're going to be putting him back into that position.
Do I have consensus?
Yes.
Will the Department of Public Works and Urban Development, please present their resolution?
Good evening, council president and the councilmen. Four resolutions only for you. Resolution Authorizing Improvements, committed grant application, accepted grant and maintenance for the project of some avenue and roadway improvements of the 2018 infrastructure and school aid grant.
Do I have consensus?
Yes.
Resolution wire, Resolution Authorizing Award for Professional Service Contract, Monony Associates, 24 Carmichael Street, North New Jersey, for Mill Campbell Field, in the amount of $16,500.
Do we have consensus?
Yes.
Resolution Z, Resolution Authorizing Award for Professional Service Contract to the Nishwan Group LLC, professional planning services related to redevelopment in amount not to exceed $40,000 planning. It has a contract for the last two years, so...
Do we have consensus?
Yes.
Yes, question. What are the services that we're talking about, and are they specific to locations, sites, redevelopment areas?
So, so they will continue to do the services that they be providing, and it's to help us to do site investigations, to declare areas in need of redevelopment, write redevelopment plans as we need them. Right now, they're working on the Eball building on South Second Street, and also help us to look at the old zoning ordinances that we have, and make sure that, you know, we updating those ordinances according to what's there on the market, the need of the city as we do more redevelopment in the city.
Are there any other proposed redevelopment areas besides the Eball building that are on the horizon?
Yes, we have, we have probably two hundred areas that we're looking at. Some of them are all redevelopment plans that probably will have to be amended, and they're going to help us to do that. For instance, one of the redevelopment plans that we're going to be looking at soon is the old Marinos Track on West Front Street, and the reason we would like to look at that area is because we have been receiving a little bit more... is because we have been receiving a little bit more of inquiries and interest from investors and developers and we can fill it out the market a little bit more. So we have to amend those, that type of redevelopment from the past.
That's a good time to look at those old plans that aren't, haven't gone anywhere, but it sounds encouraging.
Do we have consensus?
I have a question. Could we get a copy of some of the redevelopment plan that they're doing?
Sure, anyone in specific that you would like to see?
What they're going to work on for this $40,000.
I'm sorry?
What the $40,000 is going to be covering?
Well, again, just to clarify, $40,000 is the entire contract for, for, for 2018. Right now we haven't worked on one redevelopment plan. That's not going to absorb all $40,000. However, we will continue to use them as the need comes up.
So this will be the limit that they'll give for the rest of this year for any redevelopment that they do?
Yes.
I still will, whatever you're working on. Can I see what they're doing?
Not a problem.
All right.
Do we have consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution double ladies, resolution authorized property escrow refunds totaling $500.
Do we have consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, will the Administration please present the voidance submitted for consideration?
So we did ordinance 2018-09. Ordinance 2018-10 is the ordinance to change a zoning area from parking to loading on Church Street.
Do we have consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
2018-11 is the resolution that will enact, amend the salaries, wages for the PMEA contract.
Do we have consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
2018-12 is the resolution of salary amendments for the United Severus Workers Union, which is also the contract that is being considered.
Do we have consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
Resolution 2018-13, again, the adjusted salary for the Police Man- Officer Association Local 19, which is the contract that was set up.
Do we have consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
2018-14 is again a salary amendment for the Police Man- Officer Association Local 19. This is dealing with Superior Office.
Do we have consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Council members, MC 2018-15 is an ordinance amending the, the management structure of the Special Improvement District. This was previously voted on and approved by the Council. But due to a court case, it is being reintroduced this evening with a first reading next week. And if it passes on first reading, it will be followed by a second reading and public hearing. Prior to public hearing, there will be notice provided to all, all property owners within the CID district. Obviously, as I, this was previously, this was discussed at greater length in the executive session. Thank you.
Do we have consensus?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Citizens are welcome to address the Council on any governmental item of concern to them, whether or not it is scheduled on the agenda. During the portion of the agenda, a total of sixty minutes has been allocated for all public comments to be presented. If you wish to be heard, come to the mic and give your name, address to the clerk for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, will be limited to five minutes. Large groups are urged to select someone to represent them. Floor is now open.
Oregon, Minroth Webb, 1000 South Avenue. Do you have a question? Since the, the CID is going to be the regular, CID is still in effect right now, we're going to be receiving all the money for the first two quarters, correct?
Council President Mayor, respond. The role of operation of the CID will continue. Payments will be made as they have always been made. So the status quo will exist with regards to the Special Improvement District.
Might until?
In the event that the Council adopts a new management structure, obviously that would change things. But until then, we will maintain status quo.
Okay, that's it. Thank you very much. Have a good night. Yes, sir.
I'm Maxine Williams. My address is 1409 Southland Parkway, Plainfield, New Jersey. Maxine Williams, 1409 Southland Parkway, Plainfield, New Jersey. I have one request. If we could have speed bumps on, from Woodman to Park Avenue, is it Plainfield? It's very busy there. And another problem I have, I have a neighbor has chickens roosters. Woo-hoo-hoo-hoo, day and night, for three years. And I want to know, do you have a policy about that, please? My bedroom's in the back, in their backyard is, I would say, right here, and my bedroom is right here. So for three years, I've been listening to the roosters. And yet there is nothing built, a second house for, for the chickens and roosters. And then giving out eggs. I don't want, I don't like eggs. I don't want the eggs, you know? And then another neighbor across the street, I mean, it's not bothering me. He has chickens also. I mean, you know, I moved from Newark. Across the street from Beth Fisher Hospital and the school, Maple Avenue. And I, I just wanted some peace, you know? But now these roosters, woo-hoo-hoo-hoo, day and night. It's kind of annoying. And I want to know, do you have a policy about that?
Council, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Every resident of the city of Plainfield has a right to, to quiet enjoyment of their home and not to be subject to a, which sounds to me could be a noise nuisance. And if we stay at the meeting, we'd love to get some information. And I'd like to speak to you with the police director, see if we can address the issue.
Okay, thank you very much.
Johnny Pritchard, formerly of 7230, out of Plainfield, 42X44, St. Holly Street, Cranford, New Jersey. Ladies and gentlemen of Council, two things that I'd like to bring to your attention. We have our sons and daughters of Plainfield who are serving in the Army, Navy, Marine Corps, Coast Guard, and Air Force. Just because Trump is the President, that doesn't mean we turn against our own soldiers. Quite the contrary, we must back them up as they do, as they do their duties. We failed to do that during the war in Vietnam. We, during that time, we lost sixteen men. Sixteen men from Plainfield who gave their lives fighting for us. Those who had returned from their tours, we turned against them. We called Nazis murderers, baby killers. I'd like to see that we're Nazi retired once and for all. It's time that we, we remember this. The four brave soldiers who were spies, no count as a stranger. Remember, leaves this country stay in doing our danger. The other thing, ladies and gentlemen, we need to reactivate Muhlenberg Hospital. We need that hospital, we need it badly, and we need to make sap. What if there's another nine eleven attack occurring? Let's not forget that burnt on September 11, 2001. There'd be 30,000 people that been slaughtered like hodge in a pan. And the sooner we activate Muhlenberg, the better, off we order. B, don't make this a threat.
Yes.
Good evening again, Alan Oldstein, 939, excuse me, Madison Avenue. In response to Councilman Good's comments, it doesn't matter whether the state, in this case, the state generically, and is doing it of its own volition or whether you're doing it as a favor to a constituent. You shouldn't be making religious pronouncements. You shouldn't be making pronouncements pertaining to what orthodoxy happens to be in a, in a particular religion. It's, it's just an area that this city or government should, should not be a part of in this country. Now, I want to speak about the budget. There was a city council president some years ago, and I'm sure he cribbed this as well, who said that a budget is really a statement on your values. And I want to relate that to the fact that this budget, by every budget since 1998, has been perpetuating a fraud on this city and its residents. And that fraud has to do with the interlocal agreement. And it has to do specifically with who the city or PMUA pays the cost of disposal. In other words, the disposal bill, the tipping fees. And the agreement, if anyone's ever bothered to read it, I mean, none of you ever come to any of the PMUA meetings, this isn't the first time I've spoken about this in public comments. And I had a conversation with the mayor before he became the mayor, in his transition period, and, you know, all along the way. The agreement that was presented to the public, that was voted on, that has never been amended, requires the city to pay the cost of disposal and to set up an account in where appropriation of $1.2 million to pay that bill. Now, within weeks of this agreement becoming effective, a secret agreement basically came into place. And the PMUA started paying this. And there were two major ramifications. One is that the information pertaining to the cost of disposal and the tonnage figures, which would be a good baseline to judge what they're doing and how their costs are. And mind you, costs today for single-family residences are 36% higher at PMUA than they are at grant sanitation. There's no economic incentive to anyone who owns a single-family home in this city to use PMUA. The other part of this is that now you have no idea how much tonnage is being picked up, what the costs are going to be. But this would also enable the PMUA to basically skim hundreds of thousands of dollars from 1998 onwards until that point where the disposal costs were actually greater than $1.12 million. Because the city started cutting a check for $100,000 a month, every month. Nobody ever votes on it. The only time you vote on it is when you stick it in the budget. Now, the budget also calls the amount that they get for the sewer lease, revenue sharing. Now, revenue sharing is a very specific thing in that interlocal agreement. PMUA hasn't paid a penny of revenue sharing all along the way. But at the same time, that the city started shelling out money to PMUA and not paying the disposal bill and basically being in the blind, the city started calling the sewer lease, revenue sharing, because they wanted to deflect attention away from the fact that there was never going to be a solid waste lease as was approved by this Council, as was approved by the Board of Commissioners at the PMUA, and as was described by McManaman in Scotland when they were the attorneys, both before and after this agreement became effective. And this is a central part. This isn't like some tertiary page eighty thing. You only have to read that agreement for five minutes to say, what's going on here? This, what we're doing is not what this agreement says. So I've said it before, I'll say it again. The budget perpetuates a fraud on, and this fraud has been going on for years and years.
Thank you.
You know, when I went down there, that guy told me to rent.
My name is John Jackson, I live 9097, Plainfield. I kind of feel about this city council. It seems so far to me that you're probably more intelligent than the ones I've seen in the past. I hope I'm right. I'd like to see, seeing Plainfield change towards its citizens who are doing trouble to help them get out, straighten out the muggles. I've seen it going in the past. I'm kind of upset with the PMUA in that before they came, they were black businessmen. Not big businessmen, but people who worked for themselves in the aspect of having only trucks and small businesses. As a result of the PMUA, you put all of them out of business to a point that the trucks are left on the street with materials on it that they couldn't get rid of. Whatever happened to them? Sometime I'm going to write to you and talk to you about it because things like this has happened to us in so many other ways. And they closed the dump down wherein I owned a truck. And I tried to get rid of the stuff that I had worked to put on there. And it's, the traction station kind of changed it, boom, 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 boom. We're fighting against ourselves. Let's stop it. Most of those people who have been in trouble through actions somewhat similar to this have no way of, or no heart, or no understanding that they could complain and do something about it and vote for those who look out for them and against those who don't. When I came to you the last time or the time before, I told you about how ragged Seven Street was before and the little after Park Avenue. I haven't seen any changes now. Whatever's going on with some of these, the roads were to have these, this disrupted roadwork, it should be fixed. And I'm sure it's not that expensive, but it's expensive for those who own cars and that it gives their cars. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council members. James Branch, driving class of 1978, prior address 139 Edwood Avenue. There's, there's a lot of things that's been going on in Plainfield on the agenda. I didn't see anything about the Lime Bike. So I don't know if that was actually approved or not. But basically, we don't feel that that's really appropriate for the city of Plainfield. You should have some type of docking procedures for it as far as not, you know, just to bring 250 bikes into the, to the city and people riding around and lock up the back. It is not really, you know, beneficial to anybody. Also, the, I received some correspondence from the Quakers office where they're looking at trying to expand and get better relationships with the community. So I dropped off some information to the Director of Public Safety and Affairs Office and I'm requesting a meeting with him to discuss their particular plans as far as increasing communications within the community and that have better accountability. Also, at the same time, I received some correspondence from the, the Department of Homeland Security, which I want to kind of like merge in that, with that meeting. And I want to forward it to the Council and, you know, hope he'll respect our request for the meeting. Thank you.
Good evening. Norm D. Muhammad, 13 West Deville Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey. First of all, I'd just say to all members of the Council, good seeing you once again. It's been quite a while since I've been up here. Unfortunately, one of my dear mentors is illing, so I have to spend a lot of time in regards to making sure that he becomes all right, my God's with him. Anyway, fast forward. As many of you know or should know, the 50th anniversary of Dr. Martin Luther King's assassination is upon us. It will be on April 4th. Plainfield is a very unique town. I don't think there's anyone from any board or any district who has not benefited from the work, the life, and the legacy. who has not benefited from the work, the life, and the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King and the sacrifices to be. I found it somewhat stressful and upsetting that originally my organization, the Plainfield Anti-Voluntes Coalition, was going to schedule a fiftieth anniversary memorial commemoration about the life of Dr. King. And originally, we wanted to have it at Dr. Martin Luther King Plaza. I had my research team contact the city, contact Public Works, because when I went to the particular type site that was named or renamed Dr. Martin Luther King Plaza, there was no signage there. So I had my research team contact, I don't want to re-spoke it, Works. And to my astonishment, they said there was no such street named Dr. Martin Luther King Plaza. I did some further research to come to find out that in nineteen eighty-three, there was signage there with the renaming of that street, the corner of front and church, to Martin Luther King Plaza. So we can, Director of Public Works, maybe you can get that signage put back up? Okay, it was indeed named Dr. Martin Luther King Plaza. Fast forward, April fourth, twenty eighteen, at six thirty, the Plainfield Anti-Voluntes Coalition, Homeland Center, will be the only organization in the city of Plainfield that will commemorate the life of Dr. Martin Luther King's assassination on his fiftieth anniversary. We will be meeting promptly at six thirty at the corner of Plainfield Avenue and West Fourth Street. It will be only a one-hour program. It's going to be an hour of power. We're going to discuss the life, the legacy, the mission of Dr. Martin Luther King from the Voting Rights Bill, Public Commendations Bill, to his last project that he worked on before he was unfortunately assassinated, which was the Poor People's Campaign, dealing with economic justice. So once again, not to belate the point, I expect to see all of you here to be there at six thirty on the corner of Plainfield Avenue and West Fourth Street because I says I would be remiss if I didn't remind you, which I shouldn't really have to. Then I'm quite sure all of you have benefited or have been bequeathed some kind of benefit from his life, his struggles, and his sacrifice. So without you further ado, I see you Wednesday, six thirty.
Seeing no one else for public comment, did I get a motion to close?
No.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
Get a motion to adjourn?
No.
I have a question, council president. I have a neighbor that, I don't know what the ordinance say about noise, like construction of property on Sundays. Evidently, the neighbor next to her is building and tearing out walls and making noise. So what is the ordinance say on Sunday? Does it regulate the same way that it does the weekday? Or should there not be any construction going on on Sunday?
Of course, there's no construction on Sunday.
It's called poison. Poison, at least.
Can I get more? To adjourn? On favor? Of course, to adjourn.